All right, well, welcome to your city hall. It is September 5th, 2023, 6:00 PM, and I'm going to call this meeting to order for the City of Iowa City. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Here.
Burgess.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Harmson.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
All right, well, welcome again. Super excited to see everyone here in September as the weather is changing and the nights are getting darker quicker. Item number two is Proclamations. 2A is Constitutional Week, and this will be read by our own Andrew Dunn, Councilor Andrew Dunn.
Thank you. Whereas September 17th, 2023 marks the 236th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, and whereas the Constitution has been amended from time to time to define basic rights, to extend those rights to all persons, and to modify other specific aspects in light of contemporary concerns, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, now therefore I, Andrew Dunn, City Councilor, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, Iowa do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2023, to be Constitution Week in Iowa City and reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. Accepting this proclamation is Sherilyn Evans.
Thank you. The Daughters of American Revolution was founded in 1890. Our Pilgrim Prep chapter here in Iowa City has celebrated over 110 years of service to this community. The DAR works to honor the memory of the patriots who fought for American independence, and it seeks to maintain and protect historical sites and artifacts related to the Revolutionary War era. The organization is also involved in various community service projects, educational programs, and scholarships, and initiatives that support veterans. On September 17th, 1787, our U.S. Constitution was signed. In 1955, to celebrate the signing of the Constitution, the Daughters of the American Revolution initiated Constitution Week, and President Eisenhower officially declared it in 1956. We encourage all citizens everywhere to take time during Constitution Week to appreciate the principles of freedom, equality, and justice that our forefathers strived for. The DAR are very appreciative of this Constitution Week proclamation. Thank you, Mayor Teague, for this recognition.
Great. Thank you, and you have someone else with you, so we'll just have you wave your hand. Yes, all right. 2B is Freedom to Read Month, and this will be read by Mayor Pro Tem Alter.
Whereas, the freedom of information is an integral part of the fundamental right of freedom of expression, as is recognized by Resolution 59 of the U.N. General Assembly adopted in 1946, as well as by Article 19 of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights in 1948. And whereas, the fundamental right of freedom through expression encompasses the freedom to seek, receive, and impart information and ideas through any media or format; and whereas, the freedom of expression is the cornerstone of democracy, which allows individuals and groups to enjoy several other human rights and freedoms; and whereas, libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all; and whereas, a library card empowers all people to explore new passions and interests and to pursue a path of lifelong learning; and whereas, libraries contribute to equity-based providing broad access to expensive resources, including subscription-based news, learning, and research databases, as well as internet access; and whereas, libraries play a crucial role in the education and development of all ages, from storytimes for preschoolers to college and career planning for high schoolers, as well as navigating the complexities of life by providing access to research, information, and government services that allow everyone to lead more productive and fulfilling lives; and whereas, libraries are welcoming and inclusive spaces for all people of all backgrounds to learn together and engage with one another across cultural, ethnic, generational, and economic lines, strengthening the social fabric of the communities they serve; and whereas, libraries provide unaccountable hours of entertainment and recreation which enhance the quality of life to all; and whereas, libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all; and whereas, libraries contribute to a strong local economy by providing access to the technology and training that are critical to the success of job seekers, entrepreneurs, and students; and whereas, in times of crisis, libraries and library professionals play an invaluable role in supporting their communities both in person and virtually; and whereas, the shared resources libraries offer reduce the number of items household buy and dispose of, providing a simple way to save money, conserve resources, and reduce waste. Now therefore I, Megan Alter, Mayor Pro Tem, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2023 to be Freedom to Read Month in Iowa City and encourage everyone to celebrate their intellectual freedom and uphold their freedom to read by signing up for their own library card and visiting the Iowa City Public Library and the ICPL Bookmobile frequently. And accepting is Sam Helmick with the Iowa City Public Library. Mayor Pro Tem Alter, Mayor Teague, Council, thank you so much for recognizing the freedom to read with this proclamation. We are honored to share it with the Iowa City Department of Human Rights and Equity. And I'd also like to thank you, Mayor Teague, for kicking off the celebration this month with your interview on intellectual freedom and the latest edition of the library's window, which is free and available to anybody in this space. I would like to encourage us all, though, to obtain our library card or to use it, either on the downtown library, hop on the Iowa City Public Library's Bookmobile with me, or to visit us at icpl.org. And just personally, as the President of the Iowa Library Association, to see this be the first community in Iowa to celebrate this is profound, and I thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And I know you have some other people with you as well, so if you all can just wave your hand, I know there's library staff here, so happy to see you all here, and thanks for all that you do. 2C is Welcoming Week. Whereas, our community's success depends on making sure that all feel welcome here. Today, new residents and visitors alike are a vital part of our community, bringing fresh perspectives and new ideas, starting businesses and contributing to the vibrant diversity that we all value. And whereas, this week, we honor the spirit of unity that is bringing neighbors together across Iowa City. During Welcoming Week, I invite all of Iowa City to join the movement of communities nationwide by renewing our commitment to our core American values and by taking action in the spirit of welcoming. By working together, we can achieve greater prosperity and make our community the kind of place where diverse people from around the world feel valued and want to put down some roots. And whereas, regardless of where we are born or what we look like, we are Iowa City united in our efforts to build a stronger community, recognizing the contributions that we all make to create a vibrant culture and a growing economy. We make our community more prosperous and more inclusive to all who call it home. And whereas, let us come together to build communities where every resident has the opportunity to contribute at his or her best. Let us come together to create more prosperous communities and to affirm the Iowa City still stands as a beacon of freedom and opportunity. Now therefore I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, here do by proclaim September 8th through the 17th, 2023, as Welcoming Week, and call upon all people of Iowa City to join together to build stronger communities across our region. Accepting this is Shelley Morgan and many, many others. So we'll have Shelley come, and then others can stand.
Thank you, Mayor Teague and Council. We really appreciate this. This is so exciting to be able to be here and accepting this. My name is Shelley Morgan, and I am part of the Welcoming Week Organizing Committee for our communities. Through Welcoming Week, organizations and communities bring together neighbors of all backgrounds to build strong connections and affirm the importance of welcoming and inclusive places in achieving collective prosperity. This year, Welcome Week will be held from September 8th through the 17th. Iowa City organizations will be hosting many opportunities for community members to engage and learn what resources are available and how things work, including events to be held at IC Compassion at Mercer Park and the Ped Mall. For more information about Welcoming Week, please see our social media through Better Together and through the website of welcomeamerica.org. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you. And I know there is a group that's with you, so we're going to ask everyone that's a part of Welcoming Week to stand. We even have two kiddos there. Yes, all right. Well, thanks to everyone for coming to receive their proclamation. We're going to move on to our Consent Agenda, which is Items 3 through 7, and we're going to consider 6E separately. So can I get a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, 3 through 7, with a separate consideration for 6E?
So moved, Taylor.
Second, Dunn.
All right, moved and seconded. Anyone from the public like to discuss any of the items 3 through 7, with the exception of 6E? Seeing no one in person or online. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion passes 7 to 0. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence for Item 6D?
So moved, Dunn.
Second, Burgess.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7 to 0. We're going to, can I get a motion to approve 6E?
So moved, Alter.
Second, Harmson.
All right. Anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? We'll bring up staff first, so welcome.
Good evening. Jason Hovel, City Engineer, just here to give you a brief update on the First Avenue Improvements Project. So as you remember from last time, this project will impact the area between Stewart Court and Hickory Trail on First Avenue. The intent of the project is to focus mostly on pavement replacement. There will be some minor storm sewer and curb ramp work to go along with it, but really the focus is to replace the aging pavement that's in need of replacement. A big part of this project's going to be the phasing that will go into it. We're dividing it up into three phases. The main purpose of that is to get the work done as quickly as possible, but also maintain access to residences and people that use this area. There's a couple of locations here where they only have one way in or out, and so we'll be maintaining access to everybody throughout that project. In addition to this, you know, one of the big concerns has been access to Regina School. During construction, as part of this project, we actually will be revising their access on First Avenue to make that a full-access driveway, so that'll allow for traffic to come in and out from both directions. In addition to that, maybe go to this slide here, obviously we have the Rochester Avenue reconstruction project that is going on this time as well. During that project, this fall, the plan is to complete work up to the First Avenue intersection, and so with that, we will maintain access to Regina from Rochester, from First Avenue throughout that work this fall. As the phases change here later this month, access will change to allow for access to be maintained into the school from the east throughout, but outbound traffic will go to the east for a period of time, and then that will flip to have to go west as construction progresses. But like I said, the access from Rochester Avenue, from First Avenue, will be maintained throughout the work this fall. This is the detour route that is planned with the project. Again, this will be utilizing Rochester to the east and then Scott Boulevard, coming back around. The intent is that that will be the route throughout the work. Finally, construction, looking at starting as early as later this month, with construction complete by November of this year. Our estimated construction cost was $475,000. The low bid came in just under $390,000. We did receive seven responsive bids. Five of those were under the engineer's estimate, so I think what that tells us, or hopefully tells us, is that we have contractors that are extremely interested in the work and are hoping to get it done in a quick manner. So that's something that we definitely want to take advantage of. That's not always the case, so again, we want to take advantage of that opportunity. With that, happy to answer. Any questions?
One question I have, thank you for the brief summary. I know it was not expected that you would have to do that.
No problem.
I appreciate you just hopping right up to it. I also appreciate the fact that you've had further conversations with Regina about being able to allow them full access for longer. I wanted to know in the, whether you can speak to this, are there things built into the contract about penalties and/or sweeteners for them to be moving along on schedule? Because I know that we've had other ones, and I know, post-COVID, it's incredibly hard to be necessarily be able to say, here is the timetable, and it will get done because we've had issues with supply chain and whatnot. But to the best of the city's ability, have, has there been things put in the contract to encourage them to finish in a timely manner?
I have to verify on this one, but typically we include liquidated damages, so that they have a period of time to complete the project, and after that, there would be damages that would be assessed if they go beyond that period.
Okay. And the Rochester project itself, I know it's going to end, it's going to go up to First Avenue, then kind of be put on pause for poor weather, right, the winter season, and then will start up again, and that's when next summer, the First Avenue and Rochester will be impacted, correct?
Correct.
Is that the, and forgive me, I should remember this, is that the last piece of the project, is that, or does it go further east?
It goes a little bit further east, but the majority of that work will be the intersection work, so it goes just past the intersection.
Okay. And the logic of putting this forward now, this project on North First Avenue, is so that it avoids having to do closure on both, at that major intersection of Rochester and First, correct?
Yeah, we want to get this completed, get this work done, so that then First Avenue would be open essentially all the way through, and it would allow that to remain open while the intersection work is occurring. So traffic will be maintained in the intersection during construction, but it will be reduced as they kind of do more or less half the intersection at a time.
Okay. So at no point, First Avenue will be completely shut?
Correct. Yep.
Next year.
Next year.
Next year. Right, but for this, because of the access that Stewart Court, that's why it's being done in phases, because there will be shuts down at that hill.
Correct. The only full closure of First Avenue should be this work, which is separate from the Rochester project. But yes, the reason that this is phased is because there are some locations where they only have one street or one driveway access, and so we need to maintain that throughout the construction.
Okay. Apologies in advance for what seems to be, I'll say, second degree, I'm not going full third degree, but one of the concerns that I've had along with this is, I think it's fantastic that there's been discussion with Regina, but First Avenue in its own right is a major northwest thoroughfare, as you know, and to go to Scott, that's a significant detour, right? And certainly, to have to go all the way around to Dodge is difficult. And so that primarily, the timing of how this all works, and I realize, you've explained, it could be, would be, will be worse if the project goes at the same time as when the Rochester project comes forward next year. I guess my larger question is, is it possible in future to try to time these things out so that these are, we have major road construction on the east side for the next several years, right, and it's going to impact a lot of people. I recognize that roads don't wait for schedules, but on the flip side, I know that you are, your department is struggling, and, not struggling, I'm sorry, juggling a lot in terms of timing, but is there a way in which this can be kind of looked out and say, we're looking at this, and we don't need to do this now, but three years from now, we're going to be really up against it? So how, how do you go about that so that the disruption can be as minimal as possible? Because this is one thing, I'm sure you guys hear it, we hear it, there's just so much construction, and it makes it very difficult to get around.
Yep, and I think the part of the challenge is, we're talking about sort of two, two types of projects, or what's causing these projects. You know, you look at a Rochester, you look at a Court Street reconstruction, both of those are planned, both of those are ones that we're hoping to phase that, so that they're kind of one right after the other, and not overlapping to the point that they're, they're impacting one another. Unfortunately, this is one that's really, what's causing this is the pavement condition. I think we have concerns that it's going to last until after a Rochester, after a Court Street, so it's really something where we kind of have two timelines that are unfortunately overlapping, but we really don't have the luxury of planning them out further at this point. So I think it's, that difference is what's really kind of causing this, and for us to have to try and, like you said, juggle it so that we can hopefully have as minimal an impact as possible. We understand it's not ideal, you know, and during the conversations with Regina, we've said that, and I think they understand that, that this is, this is not ideal, this is not the way we would want it to go, but we feel this is the best, best option, given what we're facing.
Thank you.
And do I remember correctly, from maybe the last time we spoke on this, that some of this reconstruction is also intended to be preventative from a repeat of the degradation? It says a low-lying area, and there were some improvements that were planned, correct?
Correct. We're making some improvements that will hopefully have this pavement last much longer in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Yes, anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your hand. I see no one in person or online. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Motion passes 7 to 0. Moving on to item number eight, which is Community Comment. This is an opportunity for folks to talk about anything that is not on our agenda. I wanted to see a raise of hands of everyone that wanted to speak on an item that is not on our agenda. I see one in the back. Is there anyone online? Okay, I'm going to allow three minutes. I'll welcome you. And there is a sign-in sheet, or sign-in stickers at the back, and also a sign-in sheet at the podium, so if you're wanting to speak later during the meeting, I welcome you to go to the back and get little sign-up stickers that you can drop in the basket. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Jeremy Ensley. I'm coming today to greet the members of the council, the community residents, and I've come before you today to advocate for the creation of a Transit Advisory Committee. And first off, we've made a lot of recent improvements to our transit system, which we can all enjoy now. However, I firmly believe that establishing a Transit Commission would be a net gain for our city. And transportation is a lifeblood of any city. It connects people to opportunities, jobs, food, childcare, education, and other essential services. It fosters inclusivity, reduces traffic congestion, and contributes to a cleaner environment. To ensure that our transportation system truly serves the needs of all residents, we must have a wider platform for community input, collaboration, and decision-making. Like Housing and Community Development and other city commissions, a Transit Advisory Commission would serve as a link between community and decision-making processes regarding our public transit system. It would provide a platform for residents, transit users, and stakeholders to voice their concerns, suggestions, and ideas. By more actively empowering the community and shaping the future of our transportation system, we can ensure that it meets a more diverse needs of our community. So that's it. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Yep. Would anyone else like to address a topic that is not on our agenda? Seeing no one in person or online. We're going to move on to item number nine, which is Planning and Zoning Matters. 9A, rezonance, 614, 622, and 630 Orchard Court. The applicant is requesting expedited action.
Find my sheet here. There it is. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, and that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Can I get a second?
Alter.
Moved by Harmson, seconded by Alter. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Anyone online? I see no one in person. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Motion passes 7 to 0. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Harmson.
Second, Burgess.
Roll call, please.
Harmson.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Motion passes 7 to 0. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, to Dunn.
Second, Alter.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7 to 0. Item 10 is our regular formal agenda, which is 10A, 2023 City of Iowa City Parking Garages Maintenance and Repair Mechanical. Resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the 2023 City of Iowa City Parking Garage's Maintenance and Repair Mechanical Project. Establishment amount of bid, security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post-notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing, and welcome.
Hi, my name is Ethan. I'm a civil engineer for the City of Iowa City. I here to talk about the parking garage projects today. So first off, I'd like to start by saying this project was previously bid. Only one bid was received, and it was well above the engineer's estimates. We ended up rejecting that bid. After discussions with the low bidder and other plan holders, it was determined to split the bid into two different projects, a mechanical project and a structural project. For the mechanical project, a little bit of background, so these were chosen based on the THP's master plan. The electrical and mechanical repairs are planned for Tower Place, Chauncey Swan, Court Street, and Harrison Street ramps. The mechanical and electrical work includes new stair tower exhaust fans and new thermostats, as well as infrared scanning of electrical equipment. The engineer's estimate for this project was $145,000. Bid letting is September 26th. The awards October 3rd. The start date is November 6th, with completion in the spring of next year. Are there any questions?
Don't hear any. Thank you, Ethan. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you are online, please raise your hand. In person, seeing no one. Online, seeing no hands raised. I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to pass to approve?
So moved, Thomas.
Second, Taylor.
Moved by Taylor, moved by Thomas, seconded by Taylor. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Motion passes 7 to 0. Item 10B, 2023 City of Iowa City Parking Garage's Maintenance and Repair Structural. Resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the 2023 City of Iowa City Parking Garage's Maintenance and Repair Structural Project. Establishment amount of bid to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post-notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing, and welcome again.
So talking about the structural project this time, a little bit of background, same thing, we're using the THP master plan to determine what work to do for this year's structural project. The structural repairs are mostly going to take place in Tower Place ramp and the Dubuque Street ramp. thing. We're using the THP master plan to determine what work to do for this year's structural project. The structural repairs are mostly going to take place in Tower Place ramp and the Dubuque Street ramp. The structural repairs for this are going to be new membrane in the stairwells, concrete crack repair, painting, stair tread replacements, sealant replacements, spall repairs, and steel repair. The estimated construction cost is $126,000. Bid letting is also September 26th, the award October 3rd, with a start date of November 6th, and this will also be completed in the spring of next year. Are there any questions?
A real quick question for these projects. Are these enterprise funds?
Are these what?
Maybe this is more for the city manager. Are these enterprise fund?
Yes, they are. It comes from the parking fund.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online. I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Burgess.
Second, Dunn.
Moved by Burgess, seconded by Dunn. Got to be a little more forward. Get your last name in there. All right, counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Ten C, Gilbert Street Bridge Replacement. Resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the Gilbert Street Bridge Replacement Project. Establishment amount of bid, security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing and welcome.
Hi, my name is Tyler Olson. I'm a civil engineer with Iowa City. So this is a project that's already gone through a bidding process before, but unfortunately we didn't get any bids regarding this project earlier this year. So this is going through another process of a bid letting that's planned for later this month. And I'll just kind of introduce the project, just kind of recap on what this project's about. But essentially, this is the bridge that's over Gilbert Street that crosses over Ralston Creek that's going to be replaced. Just kind of a general location there. It's kind of in the center of town there along Gilbert Street, at the location on this map here. And just kind of a little quick introduction to what's there right now. The existing bridge was constructed back in the early seventies, and during a previous bridge inspection a few years ago, it's been noted that there's been damage to cracking and spalling that's been identified. At this time, there was decided that replacing the bridge was the best option. And currently, the bridge right now, as time has gone on, it, there, it doesn't meet all the safety requirements. So right now, there's no safety barrier between vehicles and pedestrians. The sidewalk is essentially right up next to the street. And also associated with the bridge and around, around the area, the, there's been erosion over the years, and that, that was part of the project that's going to be addressed. So kind of a breakdown what the project's involving is that it's going to, it basically is going to be very similar to the existing footprint that's there right now. It's basically a four-lane concrete bridge. It would have six-foot sidewalks on both sides. Like I mentioned before, one of the improvements is to stabilize the stream bank around the bridge. And then also lumped into this project, particularly going to the north there, we're also including upsizing a storm sewer that's going to help address some drainage issues to the north there along, just to the north and along Court Street. And then also including a water main replacement as well, just to the north of the bridge. And during the construction there, I did want to point out that parking accommodations for local businesses and drive-through, there's going to be this little, I'll get to it in a moment there, but we're going to try to navigate for, for commercial access there for like doing trucks that unload equipment and deliveries there. They're actually going to have a connection, a temporary one, that's going in the parking lot just to the northwest of the bridge. So I, this is kind of a more detailed diagram. This is one of the excerpts from the plan sheets there, but essentially, we're going to have different detours for different phases of the project. Obviously, when a bridge is coming out to be replaced, that's going to be quite a bit of closure there. So to kind of keep with vehicles delivering equipment and materials to these businesses, we're all, we're going to try to build a temporary driveway that connects Gilbert Street to Main Lane, and this is to allow trucks to basically do a loop, because otherwise they'd be coming down to where the bridge is at and have nowhere to turn around. So this is just a temporary lane, just it's that way they can do their loops and still do the deliveries. And then throughout the project, we'll have lots of signage out there directing pedestrian use of the area and also for vehicles driving around. How this project kind of relates to the strategic plan, so there's two areas of the strategic plan has the impacts for mobility and the economy. So just kind of breaking down some of the applicable strategies with each of these impacts within the strategic plan. So one of them there is to design and maintain complete streets that are comfortable and safe for all users. And this project does include having ADA compliant sidewalks and also creating that barrier in between the sidewalk and the traffic along the bridge. And then for the economy there, this is to help ensure appropriate infrastructure that's in place for future business growth and development. So obviously, having a good functioning bridge there that can also have good connections for pedestrians going back and forth on each side of the creek to the different businesses is definitely a benefit. So part of this project is actually being funded through the Iowa DOT, and they have reimbursement program for up to 80% of project costs, up to a million dollars. And right now, the revised estimate from last year is now 3.2 million, just because of the increase in construction costs. Previously, I believe it was like 2.9. So for right now, the project timeline, we're having the public meeting, I'm sorry, the public hearing today to approve the project manual. And then later this month, in two weeks, we're going to have the, Iowa DOT is going to have the bid lettings on September 19th. And if we have successful bids and we have a low bidder, we're looking at, if everything checks out there, we're looking at a award date at the city council meeting on October 3rd. And then we're going to have the construction starting in 2024, and that'll run from about mid-March to November. Is there any questions?
I appreciate you mentioning the, the pedestrian, you'll have that separation, but what about bike riders?
Yeah, so we do have a, let me get back to, let's see here, I don't know if this drawing can be blown up any more than it is, but we do have like pedestrian detours specifically set up for those routes. And then we also do have detours for the different phases for traffic flow. So that, that would also include if bicycles need to go through those areas.
When the street is completed, Tyler, I know there'll be the separation for pedestrians on the bridge. Do you know, you said it was four lanes.
Correct.
Were we going to road diet that part at some point, or that was just further, further south?
That might be for a different part there. It's not with this project. Actually, I can go to a cross-section.
So I can jump in on that one, too. This has been a topic of conversation for five or six years, looking at, at the Gilbert Street potential road diet there. So next year, our intention is to start the road diet south of the highway and go all the way down to the Terry True Blood area down there. And then revisit this Gilbert Street section. We have a, counselors Taylor and Thomas may remember this from their earlier days on, on council, but we've got a kind of a choke point when it comes to a bike lane on that last section between the highway and, is that Benton Street, I believe, there, where we can't really accommodate that. So we need to sit down with council and revisit that. And if you want to pursue that, the funds are available in our Bike Master Plan Capital Improvement Line, but it's a, it's a pretty considerable expense, and it has a, a detour through Riverfront Crossings Park was the preliminary plan. So that's something we can look at this fall or next spring with you, if you want to pursue that piece north of the highway. Right now, we feel most comfortable doing that piece south of the, of the highway.
Thank you.
And forgive me, six-foot sidewalks, are those meant to be able to be used by bicycle traffic, at least as they cross the bridge? Or would that still be just bike lanes or just in the regular flow of traffic once the bridge is complete?
I'm trying to remember what the boundaries are for the ordinance by which bicyclists are not allowed on the sidewalks in the downtown area. I think Gilbert Street may be the boundary for that, but I can't remember how far south that goes. So otherwise, there are lots of other instances where pedestrians are on sidewalks, of course, have to yield to pedestrians, I'm sorry, that bicyclists are on sidewalks and have to yield to pedestrians. But I, I just can't recall, I can probably get that answer for you quickly, about whether that part is considered part of downtown and thus bicyclists would not be allowed.
Well, the reason I ask is because obviously, the road diet would address some of those bicycle lanes on that roadway. But I was just wondering, in the sort of meantime, and by the way, the increased pedestrian safety is fantastic, so.
Yeah, we won't, we won't get too deep into it. One of the, one of the challenges with this section of Gilbert Street is there are a lot of delivery vehicles, and we've seen some of those challenges play out on Clinton Street downtown. And that's one of the dynamics I think deserves a little bit further conversation, because I think we should, we would probably expect to see a number of loading zone, lack of loading zone bicycle conflicts on, on Gilbert Street should we move forward.
And Sean, there's currently sheros on Gilbert in that area, which I assume there would be repainted again when?
The pavement, there'll be.
Right, okay. Okay, thank you. And then one last thing, I make a note when I saw the storm sewer, I always think that plays actually into our climate plan a little bit when we talk about resiliency, you know, for larger rainfall events and stuff like that. And so I, that jumped out off the page at me as well.
This is just to satisfy my curiosity. What does this rebidding have that the other one didn't? Is it, was it just a matter of timing?
Yeah, timing there with the scheduling there. It was a more compressed schedule beforehand. I think we included that Saturdays were mandatory for working there. So and based on the feedback that we received there, we're switching it from the, how many days, which days they can be doing work there. So we're actually increasing the time there, so we're going earlier, so they're allowed to start in about as early as mid-March with the late date of April 1st. Before then, we didn't, I don't think we had that in there. So we're trying to increase, get a little more flexibility so the contractors can actually get in there and be able to commit to that.
And I have asked the question on a different project, but are there strictures in place about basically delivery on time, that they'll be able to finish the project within?
Yeah.
I mean, I know that was part of the.
We have like fines that, or incentives and disincentives there. Yeah, so we do have revisions to that as well. So we do have liquidated damages, so if they're late, they do get penalties for that. So we do have kind of incentives to try to keep them on, on schedule there, to keep the road from being open too long.
Yeah. I appreciate you answering that, and it's, so much of this I've realized, you're hampered because of having to take the lowest bid, if I'm remembering right, from when the.
Lowest responsible, responsive.
Responsive, yes, sorry. So just, I appreciate that you all are doing what you can to make sure that the contractor is able to, to get the work done. So thank you.
I found the boundary for the downtown district, and Burlington is the southern boundary, so anything south of Burlington, folks could ride on the sidewalk.
That other stream banks stabilization, is that similar to what's gone on throughout the city? I'm thinking, I live near Willow Creek, and it's really very attractive with the concrete and, and rocks all along the bed there, and also the removal of any like volunteer sort of trees or roots along that. So that's similar to what it'd be.
Yeah, we're going to be doing like a kind of volunteer tree or bushes there, kind of clear that out a little bit, and then do the stream bank restoration.
So it'll look very nice.
Any other questions? Thank you, Tyler. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If online, please raise your hand. I see no one in person or online. I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Dunn.
Second, Alter.
Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes, motion passed at seven to zero. Item ten D, discrimination against Section 8 tenants. Ordinance amending Title II Entitled Human Rights, Chapter I Entitled General Provisions Holders. This is the second consideration. It was deferred from January 10th, 2023. Could I give, could I get a motion to give second consideration?
So moved, Burgess.
Second, Alter.
All right, and we'll welcome Eric Gore as our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. As counsel will certainly recall, but perhaps for the benefit of members of the public, the city of Iowa City has for years had on its books some anti-discrimination ordinances that include any number of protected statuses, including source of income status, which has a number of different things in it, including funding from Social Security, SSI, temporary assistance for needing families, family investment program, generally food stamps and unemployment compensation. At present, it also includes housing choice voucher subsidies. As counsel is aware, a couple of years ago, the state of Iowa preempted that and passed three, Iowa Code Section 364.3/16, which prohibited cities from providing that kind of protection. That caused the staff, myself included, to bring to you an ordinance to amend our present law so as to remove just the housing choice voucher part of those protections, leaving all the other protections in place. Counsel was concerned, that was on January 10th, I believe, of this year. Counsel was concerned, and as Mayor indicated, chose to defer to kind of see, among other things, how landlords would respond. So that's kind of the history of how we got here. The update is, there have been a handful of landlords that have chosen to discriminate in this way, that is, who refuse to accept tenants who are funding their residencies through the housing choice voucher program. Also, as an update, the Equity and Human Rights Office, the city Equity and Human Rights Office, has been receiving complaints from members of the public saying, hey, this landlord is, you know, advertising and/or told me that they won't rent to me because I have a housing choice voucher, and I've read your ordinance, and it says that they can't do that, I'd like to file a complaint. Which puts Stephanie Bowers, our equity director, in a kind of awkward spot where she has to say, yes, I know our ordinance says that, and unfortunately, we're not able to enforce that due to state law. Similarly awkward are the occasions at which that office performs education programs for landlords, and landlord will raise his hand, his or her hand, and say, hey, it's my understanding that even though you have this on the books, you can't enforce that anymore, is that right? Yes, that's right. So her office is recommending that counsel move forward with this repeal, again, of only the part that the city, I'm sorry, that the state has preempted and nothing else as well. I'm aware from the earlier discussions that there is likely no member of city council who would like to see that discrimination taking place. I certainly appreciate that, certainly Stephanie Bowers appreciates that and agrees with that, but we're kind of pragmatic in making sure that, you know, we don't lose respect for the city code of ordinances by leaving something on our books that we know is actually not enforceable. So with that, I'm happy to try to answer any questions you may have, or certainly hear counsel's discussion.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but you all know it's coming.
If you don't have a question, you have to remain until we deliberate. Thanks. If no questions for Eric, then we'll go to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this? Seeing no one in person or online. Counsel discussion.
All right. So kind of bringing the public up to speed with what I was just referencing there, in a few conversations, both personal and in our work sessions, we've had conversations about what we can do with this. We have three general problems that we're facing. One, to clean up the code, to make sure that it is in alignment with state code. Two, to address confusion in the community, and also to avoid potential suit as a result of that confusion. And three, to ensure that we can think forward to a better future. In light of that, and in light of the more frequent use of trigger laws across the country, for better or worse, I'm going to be proposing an amendment to this, specifically to leave the ordinance as unchanged as possible, but to clarify that this particular point about the housing choice voucher subsidies is unenforceable, but should that section become enforceable in the future, it is immediately enforced in our code. It addresses the aspect of cleaning up the code, and it addresses the confusion component because if people will look to the ordinance, it will clearly say that it is unenforceable, but it will also allow it to be enacted immediately, should the state legislature get to a better place and allow us to think forward to the future. So that being said, I know that we're not gonna have anything cut and dry today, but I would move an amendment to be drafted in that manner.
And second that emotion.
Just so, I want to make sure I get the exact details of what you're proposing, Counsel Dunn. So we would move forward with the proposed amendment that's in the pack and so forth, but we would add language, kind of the trigger language, so to speak, such that if 364.3/16 or any similar state law would eventually be repealed, that this would spring back to life, and we, residents would then enjoy this protection once more.
Correct.
Okay.
Move by Dunn, second by Harmson. For the amendment. Now, should we, we have, should we, we have one more consideration for this, but should we draft up language now? I understand what you're, what you're saying.
What I would propose, Mayor, is that if all the council members feel like they have an understanding about, you know, what's being proposed and so forth, that we go ahead and move forward with the vote as amended, assuming the amendment passes tonight, and then at the next reading, I would have something more formal when counsel is to consider it. I don't think this is a highly, you know, there are times when there's a motion to amend that more or less upends the whole ordinance or changes it in a substantial way, and then we, our office typically takes the point of view, then you really need to start from scratch from the, from the first reading. I don't see that here, and certainly this kind of thing was discussed at the earlier meeting anyway, so I don't think the public would, you know, be surprised by what's going on, and certainly if they are, they would have the opportunity at the next meeting to come forth and speak their objections if they have any.
I do have a technical question about the amendment, Eric. Has the, has the prohibition on, sorry, has the law that prohibits us from banning this type of discrimination been tested in court yet?
I'm not aware of that. Now, recall that it didn't become, it was passed in 20, excuse me, 2021, but didn't become effective until January of 2023. So someone would have either had to file a declaratory judgment action, you know, before that with the anticipation of that, or since then. I'm not aware of either.
I just want to be sure that the amendment can be written away, written in a way that if a court invalidates this section, but it's not actually repealed, that the trigger would be effective in that case as well.
I'd be happy to add language to that effect.
Thank you.
All right, anyone from the public like to, oh, we already did that, sorry, it was an amendment. Well, but the.
It would be appropriate if, you know, given that, or the members of the public may not have seen that.
Sure, yeah, because the public didn't speak to the amendment. I'm gonna open up public comment again, based on the amendment. Anyone have any comments, please? We ask that you state your name and the city you're from, and we'll allow you up to three minutes.
Here it be, Enslie, Iowa City. I was wondering if considered a carrot, instead of a stick of making sure that the landlord accepts the Section 8 voucher, is there a carrot that can be offered to potentially entice landlords to be interested in taking the voucher? I was wondering if that was.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address this topic?
Great. I don't think that's public.
Seeing no one in person or online. Counsel discussion.
No, just thank you to Counselor Dunn for working on this.
Yeah. I think it's a great idea to have the language as unchanged as possible with some of those trigger points. Yeah, so thank you.
So this, at this point, if there's no further counsel discussion, this is a motion to amend, so this would just be a voice vote, and again, to be clear, voting only on the motion to amend, and then we'd have a roll call vote on the actual amendment.
Yep. Any other comments on the amendment?
I might just add that we can keep our lobbyist aware of this kind of thing, so that a red flag will go up if anything along this line comes up.
Yes.
All right, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, a seven to zero. Any other comments by counsel before we take roll call?
Just like to express my general disappointment and extreme frustration regarding the news that we have heard that this type of discrimination is occurring in our community. I do believe that's unacceptable, and I would ask that people keep letting us know if that is happening. If there's anything that we can do, I want to try, but this is disappointing to hear and disappointing that we have to do this.
Roll call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passed, a seven to zero. Item 10E, code amendment to extend the time a site plan remains valid. Ordinance amending Title 18 Entitled Site Plan Review, Chapter 2 Entitled Procedures and Cemental Requirements to Extend the Time a Site Plan Remains Valid. This is second consideration, and staff is requesting expedited action.
Can I read this one?
Mayor, I move that the rule requiring that ordinance must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Move by Taylor.
Second, Thomas.
Second by Thomas. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online. Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passed, a seven to zero. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Alter.
Second, Burgess.
Roll call, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
No.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passed, a six to one. Item 10G, add a new fee for electric vehicle charging. Ordinance amending Title III Finances, Taxation and Fees, Chapter IV Schedule of Fees, Rates, Charges, Bonds, Fines and Penalties. Section 8 Parking to Add a New Fee for Electric Vehicle Charging. And could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Burgess.
Second, Alter.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online. Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
No.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passed, a six to one. Item 10G, add a new fee for electric vehicle charging. Ordinance amending Title III Finances, Taxation and Fees, Chapter IV Schedule of Fees, Rates, Charges, Bonds, Fines and Penalties. Section 8 Parking to Add a New Fee for Electric Vehicle Charging. And could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Burgess.
Second, Alter.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online. Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Motion passed, a seven to zero. Item 10H, City Park Pool Repair or Replace Option. This is a resolution authorizing staff to proceed to public input and design development for the replacement of City Park Pool. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Burgess.
Second, Dunn.
All right, and welcome Julie Seidel Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Julie Seidel Johnson, Director of Parks and Recreation. Super excited to be here to talk about this after one of our busiest Labor Day weekends ever at City Park Pool. We've been working on this project for a while all summer with our consultants, so I will turn it over to Andrew Caputo from Williams Architects, the lead of the consulting group.
Great.
Thanks, Julie.
And Chris.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us this evening to make this presentation to you about our findings and recommendations. Our presentation tonight is an abbreviation of our existing conditions report for City Park Pool, and this is just a quick table of contents and agenda for you. We'll have these six chapters that we'll touch on as we go through the presentation this evening. And we're gonna start off with our team introduction. Again, I'm Andrew Caputo from Williams Architects, I'm an associate principal, and I am an Iowa Licensed Architect, and with me is Chris Saris with Councilman Huntsaker.
Hello, thank you. My name is Chris Saris, I'm a studio director with aquatic consultant Councilman Huntsaker.
And a little bit about our two firms, Williams Architects and Councilman Huntsaker have been working together in recent years on many aquatic projects in the Midwest in particular, and so we're pleased to work together and combine our experience in aquatic design, both architecture and engineering. All right, let's move on to our executive summary. Our mission statement, and thank you again for allowing us this opportunity to be your architect and engineer, we were specifically commissioned to look at two things in this initial project phase, and first and foremost was to prepare this aquatic facility assessment that we've abbreviated here this evening for you, and then secondly, was to specifically, based on our findings, make a recommendation to repair or completely replace the facility. Again, we retained Councilman Huntsaker as our aquatic engineer for this part of the project, and also American leak detection. We went through some steps for the process here for this assessment. The city had a lot of good information to provide, we appreciated that from Parks and Recreation. We received drawings as old as 1944 to 1948, these were the original City Park Pool drawings, they were very interesting to review and very applicable to some of the findings that we have here this evening. Also, over time, subsequently, there were a lot of the various renovation drawings that have occurred at City Park Pool, so we appreciated that as well. Part of our mission was to comment on the existing conditions. We spent some time touring the facility with our team, documenting our findings. We took a look at a lot of reports and test data that previously existed for this facility, and as part of this presentation here this evening, we're gonna be providing you with some comments and some photos to take a look at, some existing drawings. Our commentary about whether or not this project should be repaired or replaced is based on the goals that Parks and Recreation have established, so we'll take a look at those in a minute. Also, we've prepared a budget for you for the repair option. All right, for project goals, I'm gonna let Chris speak to the next two slides of the project goals and history.
Thank you. So we have a number of project goals, we won't go through each one, but highlighting, providing the community recreation experience for a wide range of users. We understand that there are many different types of ways to use a facility, and we want to make sure that we are looking at all of those options for different types of recreation and leisure, as well as instruction. Providing increased independent accessibility to all the water experiences that are provided here. Things like providing more shade, providing some design and operating efficiencies in the facility, maximizing the efficiency of the lifeguard staff and the number of staff required to provide a safe facility is one of the goals here, along with a number of other goals that we have. Let's see. Looking at the history of this site and the history of the pool itself is very interesting. Obviously, a long history here and of a very popular facility, so we want, we wanted to have as much information in the history of this facility as we could, as we were looking at what is desired out of the facility and what is needed in the facility in terms of either repairs or then potentially moving forward with a replacement. So looking at the history, pool was built in 1948, significantly renovated in 87, a mechanical replacement in 2003, and then a new splash pool and pool equipment replaced in 2014. The original bathhouse from the original pool, 1948, partially demolished in 87, except for the basement and mechanical space, and replaced, and then original filter pits were abandoned and new aquatic mechanical systems were installed at that time.
Thanks, Chris. We know that City Park Pool needs to be repaired or replaced, and part of the reason that we're here and part of the reason why we were commissioned to do this report is because of the tremendous loss of water that you have been experiencing over the last three years. We're gonna talk further in detail about that in a little bit, but that was one of the problems coming to a head that really identified a decision that needs to be made. We received data from the Parks and Recreation staff initially shortly after we got underway with our report that the pool is losing 55,000 gallons of water on average a day, and that is a tremendous amount of water to lose through a swimming pool. And that's despite the efforts that continue to be made annually for patching the basin, crack ceiling, and painting to try to stem the water loss. One of the things that we'll also talk further about in a moment is the continued longevity of the pool structure is in doubt upon further investigation. That structural uncertainty is also what is causing this tremendous water loss. All right, let's move on to the next chapter with our recommendations. So should City Park Pool be repaired or replaced? And we are recommending the council consider replacement of the facility, and our recommendation is based on the deteriorated conditions that we found in the basin. Again, the long-term concern about the structural integrity of the walls, we'll look at some photos here in a minute, some more about that. There's also a need to replace the mechanical systems for the pool at this time, they're also aging, the pool filtration, sanitation, and piping systems. And similarly, the bathhouse, like the pool, is starting to become outdated, especially in the function that it is intended to provide for safety, security, and operational areas and user amenities. Take a closer look at that in a moment. One of the things that can happen about replacement is it provides an opportunity, and the opportunity is for the community to weigh in on what perhaps a new pool, a new replacement pool might look like. It'll allow some interesting conversations to happen between different user groups, some conversations also about energy efficiency, operating costs, longevity of a new pool, new operating systems, and new accessible features. We're gonna look at the reasons for our recommendations now, and we've titled this section Pool Observations. And we're gonna take you through some bullet points here that we just have in bold, the bolded points are our observations, and then we've made some descriptors there, as we'll just kind of move along through here to explain to you why we've come to this conclusion. Just to start things off, one of the, one of the obvious issues with the pool that we learned is the condition of the current pool being an issue. We know it's aging, we know it has some existing condition problems that staff has been struggling with, especially in recent years. What's starting to happen is that the repairs are becoming more costly and complex and risky as the pool continues to fail. Previously, I mentioned the water loss issue. This little chart that we put together here that perhaps you could see on your monitor and those in the audience, and this is just in the last three seasons, and this is, again, despite the annual basin repairs that have been happening to try to stem the water loss. And we can see here, just again in quick summary, 30,000 gallons in 2021 to 55,000 gallons so far this year as of the end of July, when we received this data. So this is a very difficult situation to be in, to think that the. So this is a very difficult situation to be in, to think that the staff is doing the best job that they can to try to keep the pool watertight. And yet, the body, the vessel, as we call it, is continuing to leak with, you know, increasing gallons per minute. The deterioration of the concrete pool, this speaks to specifically where our team found some of the leaking, and we'll look at some photos here in a minute. There's basically three areas. There's the problem with the joints between the pool wall and the gutter. The gutter is stainless steel. It sits on top of the concrete wall. We'll look at that in a little bit. We also found a lot of leaking at the joints in the floor. And there's leaking at the previous patches where repairs have been made. The patching materials and the existing pool are only, seem to be temporarily compatible, but because the vessel continues to deteriorate, those joints between new and old construction continue to fail. The next item that we want to look at with you is a water stop. And for those of you that are not aware, when there is a repair made to a swimming pool and you cut concrete out of the floor or you cut concrete out of the wall, when you repair that concrete, you need to keep the vessel watertight. Based on the old drawings, excuse me, that we received, there was no evidence originally of a water stop or even water stops provided in the 1987 drawings. That indicates that the joints were not set properly to provide a watertight seal. Even if water stops were added in construction, even if they were not indicated on the design drawings, but let's say they were added on construction, we know the joints are failing, again, from our research. So that is a continuing problem that is almost impossible to mitigate after the fact without removing all of those concrete patches. We've also seen deterioration of underground pool piping. Perhaps that doesn't come as a surprise. Originally, swimming pool piping was cast iron. Today, PVC is the material of choice, plastic, basically, for swimming pool piping because it is corrosion resistant. Underground piping receives corrosion in two directions. When it's cast iron, it becomes corroded from the chlorinated water moving through the piping. And then, of course, because it's subject to groundwater, it receives corrosion from the outside. We spoke before in this presentation about the annual work to seal the basin has not been able to work. Staff has done some dye testing. And the dye testing is what also has proven that the joints are not watertight, especially in the deep end. I mentioned previously about the joint materials that are continuing to fail. I'll let Chris speak to the structural integrity issues here for a moment.
So investigation into the structural integrity of the pool shell itself, we're done with some coring samples being taken. You can see from this image that some cracking has occurred through the pool shell itself. So that core sample is just an indicator of cracking through the layer of concrete. We're seeing it not just through the aggregate but also through, or not just through the concrete, but also the aggregate pieces in the pool shell itself. So some significant separation in that, the pool shell, planar fractures, as we would call it. And then, a lot of random cracking also. So it's just a general failure of the concrete of the pool shell. And it being 70 years old or so, that's not uncommon at this point to see concrete that has deteriorated to this point. The pool shell itself continues to spall sections of the surface, releasing, flaking off, and creating thinner sections. Where that's happening at joints between old and new concrete, it's causing more failures of that joint. And we'll see some more photos here in just a second of the spalling that is happening And here we go. Here's a good example of that. So speaking to the spalling of the concrete, so large sections of the concrete surface of the pool shell have broken out. These have been patched, repaired in many, many different places, but it's going to continue to happen. Something else, talking about the health and safety, the code requires that treated water that has been filtered and then chemically treated to provide sanitary water has to be circulated throughout the entire pool. This is a large pool, and the treated water is returned to the pool through, integrated return from the gutters. So the water is returned just below the surface of the pool around the perimeter. This is a very wide pool and a very deep pool in the diving well. So that treated water is not making it to the center and to the deepest parts of the pool in the most efficient manner. So that is one issue that we have found with this, with the pool. Then we also have other issues with the main drains in the pool. The 2008 Virginia Graham Baker Pool and Spa Safety Act requires some specifics on the main drain covers and the sumps, the box below those main drain covers. And we found that the current situation does not meet code. So that will need to be addressed in the near future. Pool gutter grating is worn out, needs to be replaced. It has reached the end of its life. And then, pool floor that has not failed is very rough and is going to provide opportunities for lots of abrasions, cuts, scrapes on feet. And so that's something that will need to be addressed. And then similarly, there's some issues with the pool deck in certain areas that will need to be addressed. Same thing, safety hazard in that, in those areas. Do you want to address this?
Go ahead, Chris.
All right. So accessibility at the pool is also an issue. There is a pool lift that is provided for the pool, though the operational situation needs to be investigated a little bit more to make sure that this lift does meet code in terms of the depth that's provided here. There is also a temporary set of stairs that is in place to also provide some access, though that doesn't meet ADA guidelines for accessibility. So those are a couple of things that need to be addressed here. Because of the depth of the pool, it isn't like a zero-depth pool where users could just walk right in. So we have to provide some more accessible means of entry. Return on the investment. It would be a shorter return for a repair, but we're going to see the repairs that are necessary here are going to be very significant. And in the long run, it's going to need to be replaced, but that long run is not very long. It's a fairly short lifespan that we would project for the existing pool. So we are proposing that looking at the replacement of the facility is probably the most efficient method for dealing with this at this time.
Can you go? I can keep. All right. Go ahead. So one of the things that we wanted to point out to you is risk. With a repair option, the difficulty is, based on the condition of the pool, is to try to decide what is the line between renovation and leaving existing construction in place. Because by definition, a repair is a repair. It's not a complete replacement. When we see a facility such as this one where we see the concrete vessel is in this state, what becomes difficult for us and creates an element of uncertainty in the design process is deciding what and how much of the existing structure remains in a repair scenario. And of course, that decision ultimately is going to eventually, no matter where that line is drawn, that decision ultimately will have to be revisited. The structure can continue to deteriorate beyond where that repair line is. So we just don't recommend a major investment in an existing structure. One of the things we'd also like to comment on that I briefly mentioned earlier, or Chris may have mentioned, is the pool equipment is also reaching the end of its life cycle. Those filters that you see in this photo, this photo here is just showing some of the leaking. We did see a lot of the pool equipment leaking in the mechanical rooms, in the pool equipment room. That also is contributing to water loss, and it's also using a lot of chemicals for treating additional gallons of water that you don't need to. The filters, because they're old, they're reaching the end of their life now at about 20 years old. They're not currently NSF certified, and they don't have the air relief system that's currently required by code. So even in a repair scenario, you would be looking at replacing all of the mechanical equipment. One of the other things we wanted to talk to you about tonight too, just briefly, is sustainability. Like many older facilities, this pool being no different was designed at a time when conservation was not on the forefront of the imagination of the public or the designers. And so even in a repair scenario, again, deciding what portions remain, those systems that remain will not be as energy efficient as new systems will be, and they will not be as long-lived as new systems will be. It will be possible in a repair scenario to upgrade the efficiency by replacing some systems. But again, in a replacement scenario, you will have the lowest operating cost over time. All right, we're going to take a closer look at just some of the photos. We included some photos that you saw when we went through our summary for the reasons for our recommendation. This sequence is just going to briefly take you through some more pictures, again, just again, to help you see the scenario that we're looking at here with the existing pool. This is the 1987 swimming pool plan. Wanted to just point out two things for you on this drawing. At this time, in 1987, the main drain piping was replaced. The reason why the piping was replaced at this time would have been only because the existing piping was probably so corroded that they weren't returning the proper amount of water back to the surge tanks, which would have been the only reason why to replace that piping. So that piping was replaced in 1987. The other thing that we wanted to show you again is just looking at the floor plan of the pool at the deep end, the deep end being on the left and the shallow end being on the right. You could see the hatched areas where the drains were replaced and the saw cutting of the pool. So this is just meant to convey that where that patching was done in 1987 is a significant area in the deep end. And because those joints are not watertight, there's water loss there that's occurring all along the perimeter of that original saw cut. There were some drone photos taken by staff prior to the repairs this year. Those photos were just an excellent resolution to show some of our findings in detail to all of you tonight. These photos, you can see some of the definition, again, of the deep end patching and the shallow end patching. Some of the, the joints are a little bit darker in color, if you could see those. So there are a lot of joints in the pool itself. We're going to take you through a sequence here just of some photos showing some of the cracking and delamination that we saw. The photo on the left is some deterioration at the pool wall just below the gutter. Now, the photo on the top right is the ceiling of the caulk at the joints in the deep end that continue to fail. And of course, the bottom right is the delamination that Chris spoke about. Here's some more photos prior to the repair this year. So again, the entire surface of the pool is unstable. One area is patched, and then the area next to it is failing. This area here is actually from the American Leak Detection Investigation. We think this is probably the most prominent source of the leaks. And this is the area underneath the gutter. And the gutter is actually pulling away from the pool wall. And you could see these large gaps below the stainless steel where it meets the concrete where the grout has just been undermined. The reason for that is these 1987 details from the original drawings. In 1987, the gutter was cut off. It was originally a concrete gutter, and it was replaced with a stainless steel gutter. The original detail, as you could see in this detail, the hatch pattern behind the gutter indicates new concrete. And that new concrete was placed, but that new concrete is just bearing on the gravel backfill, and it was only attached to the pool wall with a bent bar. What we think has happened over time is we think the weight of that concrete, if you can imagine, the weight of that concrete is, as the gravel settles, the weight of that 1987 concrete is actually pulling away from the 1948 pool wall. And that's what's pulling up the gutter joint between the top of the old pool wall where the saw cut was made and the bottom. So that, that failure is significant because it's happening around the entire perimeter. This detail here is a joint showing the floor. And what we wanted to show you there again is the, while the repair was made with dowels into the new and existing, again, there's no water stop indicated. Chris, maybe I'll have you cover the, since you spoke about the core samples.
Sure.
And you can see the surface here.
Yep. Some more examples of the coring that was taken to assess the, the concrete pool shell. As we saw before in the core samples, we've got cracking through the thickness of the core. We can also see the uneven surface of the pool bottom itself, which is an issue in itself. I mentioned the VGBA Act earlier and talking about the main drains and the main drain sumps. This is one of the main drain covers in the pool which is not compliant with code and will need to be replaced. And this one is, appears to be a field fabricated, possibly, field fabricated grate, which is not allowed. And it has to be an engineered grate that provides a specific amount of flow through it to help prevent entrapment around the drains. This is a couple of images indicating the return inlets around the pool. So the inlet nozzles are spaced regularly around the perimeter of the bottom of the gutter. And as I said earlier, that's introducing the treated water at the surface. And so it's difficult for that to reach the center of the pool and the deep end of the pool because they're just coming out of these quarter inch or three eighths of an inch hole around the perimeter of the gutter. Images of the lift and the stairs that I spoke of earlier. Here are some images of the pool deck itself. On the right, you can see the diagonal cracking across the deck. That's in an area where the original pool tunnel was located around the perimeter of the pool, and there was a set of stairs there on that corner which was filled. That fill has settled, and so the deck is settling in that corner, which is causing the cracking around the deck. We see several areas, I believe it was four or five areas around the pool deck where there's significant settling and cracking of the pool deck, and so we have uneven surfaces.
I'll just add one thing about the drainage. The interesting thing about this facility was that there's no deck drains. The, technically speaking, the deck appears to comply with the Iowa code. Interestingly enough, Iowa does not have a specific deck drain requirement, and the decks do appear to slope to grade. But over time, the deck area has been widened with various renovations. The original deck was much thinner in 1948. And so a replacement facility would introduce some continuous trench drains, and you wouldn't have a lot of the water accumulating on the deck, and you'd have a much drier deck surface because you'd have that drainage occurring, which would just be safer for bathers.
Here are some more images indicating some of the damage to the pool deck. And then, on the left, you can see the joint behind the stainless steel gutter between the deck and the gutter. That caulk joint has failed around the perimeter of the pool. This isn't even probably the worst example we have. There are a couple of photos of much wider gaps between those two. And so water is penetrating down between the deck and with the freeze thaw side. And so water is penetrating down between the deck and with the freeze thaw cycle that can cause even more damage. And then we also see some more images of the failing deck and uneven surfaces.
Thanks, Chris. All right, we'll take a look at the bath house and the bath house is an important accessory function to the pool. There were some very interesting findings that we had looking at the bath house and some of you that have perhaps grown up in Iowa City and been to the pool might be aware of of many of these issues that we'll go through tonight. But there the two that we have in green there are just very important for us to touch on. And the existing original 1948 pool equipment room is in the basement. And it is considered by OSHA and code to be a confined space. It is a confined space, meaning that there isn't an easy way to access or egress the space without deliberate effort. This photo is of the chemical room, the filter room and the chemical room. And that stair leads down into the pool equipment room. A confined space is extremely dangerous. Staff has been doing the best they can, operating, you know, this facility needing to go down the basement to access the equipment and keep it functioning. In any scenario, repair or replacement, we would recommend elimination of the confined space. If we have a basement pool equipment room, it needs a stair. It needs an emergency way out, not a ladder. The other issue that we're going to look at in some pictures that Chris will speak to more in a moment here is about the chemical storage hazard. In the room above this one, the chlorine and acid are all stored together in one large room. If those two chemicals were accidentally mixed, it creates chlorine gas. Chlorine gas is heavier than air. The basement equipment room has a hole with this access to get down to it. In an in an event of a spill, that chlorine gas will hug the floor and will go right down into this basement. That is also an extremely dangerous situation. We recommend any new bath house design have separate storage rooms and closets for acid and chlorine with separate exhausts so that it minimizes the risk to mix. Lastly, the current situation because of the bath house, again, is just an older design. First aid is currently administered and shared with the pool manager office. An enhancement to improve safety would be to design the bath house to have a dedicated first aid room that actually might have some cooling. Nowadays, adding cooling to a building such of this is it can be done very economically and strategically with split systems like you would do for a computer IT room. You can you can instead of air conditioning, say, the entire bath house, if perhaps that's cost prohibitive, you can you can air condition strategic rooms for fairly inexpensively. And first aid would be a room that we would suggest doing that. One of the things that we thought was interesting about this project is when the original bath house was 40 years old, it was torn down. So it was regarded as functionally obsolete in 1987, which is why it was demolished, or I should say partially demolished, except for the the basement. Right now, the bath house is 36 years old. So it is reaching that same period of time that it did previously where it is becoming functionally obsolete. And why do we say that? What do we mean by that when we say it's functionally obsolete? We'll take you through some photos here and show you what we mean. There are some security issues. This is the center corridor through the bath house. The admissions area is open on three sides to the public traffic. So there's no security for staff at the admissions, those that are handling passes or dollars or money. Operational issues. We spoke about the admissions and lobby space being confined. We're going to look at the pictures here. For pool management, the pool management office is undersized. There isn't a good view out of the small window of the back back of the bath house to be able to see the splash pool, the kiddie pool, which is which is to the left or to the side of the pool manager office when you're when you're looking out the the window. That's a security issue. There's also limited guard space and limited storage. In terms of the bather amenities, this pool was designed at a time when lots of people changed at a pool. Recent aquatic trends in the last 20 years suggests that, of course, showers and locker rooms should still be provided for any facility, but this is quite large and this is quite dated because the capacity and size of the locker room and showers does not need to be that large because a lot of people will will come to the pool and not necessarily change the way they did in recent years. Also, the thing that we noticed right away was that this facility doesn't have any single user washrooms. That's something really, really important to have for a public facility such as this. And we we learned from Parks and Recreation staff that generally speaking, across all the parks elsewhere in Iowa City, that single user washrooms are provided. So this facility is not really on a par with those facilities. That's really lacking. The ability to have that privacy and the ability also, if you need help, if you're disabled and you need help using the washroom and to be able to have some dignity and go in a washroom with a family member rather than trying to have that family member assist you in a larger washroom is is just something that is sorely needed. Accessibility, similar to the pool, the accessibility codes at the time the building was designed in 1987 complied, but no longer does. We spoke about sustainability for the pool. Similar thing here. A new bath house facility would allow us to design sustainable systems with energy efficiency, long-term options to consider, perhaps considering even renewable energy systems or options like solar panels. When we talk about replacing the bath house, the bath house as part of a conceptual design phase could be completely demolished. It could be partially demolished. The the building, the exterior walls could remain and the interior could be gutted and a new filter building could be built. We would suggest strongly suggest as in a later phase, thinking about that, many aquatic facilities that we've designed or renovated with a separate filter building is is very useful because we could locate it close to the deep end. And doing so means that your deep piping is very economical. In this facility, the deep end is the farthest away from the pool, which makes underground piping and routing that underground piping very expensive. And let me just quickly take you through some photos here. We're almost done with our presentation. This is the 1987 floor plan of the bath house. And you could see what I spoke about earlier with the central corridor, the passageway there. In the middle foreground is that lobby entrance that's very constricted, no space for queuing. You could see that control area there is very congested. Moving through the locker rooms on either side, the men and women's locker rooms, the locker rooms, again, are quite large, perhaps don't need to be quite so large. And then in the center of the building are the lifeguard areas and the pool manager area to the north, which we'll look at some more photos here. We did look at accessibility of the entrance. Current ADA codes require some important things. They require a passenger loading zone that is accessible, meaning you can drop off or pick up someone. They also require accessible parking and an accessible route to the building. These photos show that the existing way that you approach this building is not not accessible. So in in any scenario, a renovation or repair, we would need to create a little passenger drop off area here that would allow an accessible curb ramp and someone to get in and out of a vehicle. And then the accessible parking would need to be approved with an accessible curb ramp. We also noticed some obstacles to accessibility on the pool deck side. These pictures are of the doors out of the bath house. That's the passageway and the men and women's locker room. For whatever reason, in 1987, these odd thresholds were designed as part of that building. Again, they are an obstacle to accessibility. Looking at the existing building, the entrance is has a nice shaded cover approaching the bath house, which is a nice feature to have patrons under shade when they're when they're checking in at control. One of the things that we would like to look at perhaps as part of a new facility with you is improving upon that and providing a little bit more shade and queuing space, kind of building off that idea a little bit more. And the the pool deck side of the building, we'll take a look here in some photos at some of the deteriorating conditions of the bath house. First and foremost, on that picture, you could see the the roof is is aging. The fascias and soffits are originally wood. Those materials are just deteriorating. They've just reached the end of their life expectancy. The original soffit was a fiber board. It may be hard for all of you to see, but that fiber board is disintegrating and that allows space for birds to nest inside the building. This is the confined space that we spoke about. This has the ship's ladder that you could see that staff needs to come down to access the equipment. One of the interesting things in the photo at the bottom right towards the the top left, you see the grill. That grill is an exhaust fan. That exhaust fan is not very helpful if there's chlorine gas in there because chlorine gas is heavier than air. And when you design a pool equipment room, you need to pull the exhaust off the floor. So for whatever reason, that exhaust fan was was designed high, going down in this space, you know, as part of our study, there is air moving here. But again, if there was chlorine gas on the floor, it would stay there for some time before it was evacuated. That hatch accesses the pool equipment room from the middle of the passageway, which again, is an obstacle to pedestrians. I'm going to have Chris talk about the the chemical room.
Thank you. So Andrew mentioned the issues with the combining of some of these pool chemicals. The photo here on the left, we see the three major pool chemicals that are used in those black carboys on the left. That's muratic acid that's used for pH control. The white buckets with the blue lids, that's calcium hypochlorite. Those are stored right next to each other. If there were a spill, there would be a major issue with a chlorine gas that would be created here. Those buckets, while sealed, can crack. I have specific experience with that happening in a facility. And when that cracks, the chlorine can wick up any moisture that is around. That could be a muratic acid, could just be moisture that then moistens all of the briquettes in there and can cause an issue. And then sodium bicarbonate, which is used for total alkalinity management of the pool. In most facilities, we would want to have these chemicals completely separated in their own spaces so that there is no opportunity for any mixing of these chemicals. Interestingly, the original bath house did have separation of the chemicals that were used at that time. Very likely, they had chlorine gas as the the disinfectant for the pool, which has gone out of favor. But we would certainly want to investigate having separation of all the pool chemicals in any renovation or replacement. And then just, you know, we can see some more indications of the aging of equipment and the spaces. And the, you know, this points to the the end of life of of all of this equipment. And then some more indications of corrosion that's happening in the space. The fumes that can be released from specifically the muratic acid, but also the chlorine in the air, along with the moisture, will wreak havoc on any of the metal that's exposed. So we can see a corroded valve that probably has reduced function at this point. We can see door hardware and even ceiling in the facility that has started to fail due to moisture and chemical exposure.
Just have a few more photos of the bath house to to take you through. This is the lobby and admissions area. And we spoke we spoke about the lack of security. So you can see pool staff there at the check-in and they're just essentially open and unprotected, just not not as safe a situation as it could be. This is the pool manager office. And here, we spoke about this window that provides some view to the main pool, but no view to the splash pool. Typically, how we design these facilities is we design them as a projection. So they stick out of the bath house and they have a bay window. And that way, that bay window allows you, when guards are in the room, to have supervision of the entire facility.
Let me say one thing about that.
Oh, go ahead.
Yep. You'll also notice in the manager's office, the the chemical controller is mounted on the wall in the manager's office, which is not something you see very often. That's usually going to be in the mechanical space. So we keep everything separate. It's great for monitoring, but that's not where you want to be doing your chemical testing.
Thanks, Chris. One of the things that we also would recommend looking into is enhancement for guard operations, just improving staff retention and the working conditions that the guards currently experience. These are just a couple photos. There's some lifesaving equipment that has to be stored out in the middle of the corridor. The the top two photos are just showing some appliances again, where there isn't really any counter space for guards to use. The microwave is kept on the floor because they don't really have a counter. The guard facilities are also outdated. Just to show you an example of the guard shower, lav and water closet. These are the existing locker rooms. The space itself architecturally is is quite nice with the skylights and the open truss work. But what what we see here again is is just a facility where the plumbing fixtures no longer comply with accessibility codes or the lockers or dressing areas. One thing I want to briefly mention is the showers. None of the existing showers currently comply with the plumbing code. The plumbing code requires you to have dedicated drains. No bather's rinse water can cross over to another bather. So on the day we were there, fortunately, there was a lot of shower use, so we could take these pictures and you could see where wastewater is is crossing across the shower area, which is something that a new facility would not have. Storage, we mentioned this lastly, last item for the bath house. Staff doing the best they can just to locate some storage on the side of the building. These items would be last much longer if they were protected as part of a small storage room. Budget, we looked at a budget for the repair facility, trying to understand here the magnitude of these repairs and looking at it. Chris's team looked at in the existing conditions report, basically identified a long list of items that we've talked about tonight, tried to put some cost to those based on our professional opinion and historical data from other projects. We did put some money in for some site work. We know we wouldn't want to replace the parking lot, but again, making those accessible improvements to parking, accessible route, accessible drop off, putting an allowance in for maybe $500,000 to do that. Talk about abandoning the confined space, renovating the bath house. We would move all of that equipment out into a separate building. We added some, we added 15% for a repair allowance to the pool. Again, we haven't identified all the existing problems, just trying to be safe. We know existing perimeter piping of the pool would need to be replaced, so there would be deck replacement. And when we were all said and done with this, basically, we were coming up with a cost of around $10, $10.5 million or so. And just looking at this, thinking, is this a good investment is the question. And our conclusion is really this would not be our recommendation. Certainly, as a council, you could choose to renovate the facility, but again, this $10.5 million is going to end up costing you more as existing parts of the facility remain and fail. So our conclusion for this evening is that we are recommending complete replacement of the pool. We found that because of the condition of the pool, that a repair project would look very much like a replacement project and be very, very costly in order to try to mitigate these issues. We just believe and we would recommend that any money spent, especially that much money, be spent on new infrastructure. That's going to give you some longevity. And then lastly, in in green there, the new aquatic facility will give the community a chance to weigh in on what type of facility they would like or what amenities that they would like for a new facility. All right, we're going to talk about our next steps and then we'll have Julie conclude our presentation. So what would we do if council votes to replace the facility? Our next step would be a conceptual design phase. And one of the most important things that I wanted to mention this evening, that Chris and I wanted to speak to you about, is the history of City Park Pool is very important. I know personally, as an architect, history is something that is I know personally, as an architect, history is something that is cherished in the community. History has a role to play in the design process. And we wanted to just mention that as we explore different concepts, depending on public feedback, a new pool doesn't necessarily mean it has to be a different pool. That's what the public input process would be for, trying to build that consensus. So if there's a, if there's a strong desire amongst the community to have a similar replacement pool, that can easily be done. We've done that before in many projects. Similarly, if the new pool looks different, it can be designed in a way that respects that historical context. And that actually is an exciting challenge for us as your architects and engineers. So we want to look to the past, respect the past, but also look to the future. What we're going to talk about for just the next couple slides before I turn things back over to Julie is the conceptual design phase. One of the things that we want to make sure that happens with this phase is to include some focus groups, staff, Parks Recreation Commission, city council, yourself, solicit some input. We'd create some design concepts for you and then have a survey, and then those concepts would then be presented and voted on by all of you. So this just outlines our next steps, just item by item, what we would do. And Julie's going to talk about this in a moment. And then lastly, after approval, when and if the final design concept and budget would be approved, that's when we would actually proceed to project implementation. And we'd go to the basic architectural services part of the project to actually go through a design, construction bidding, and phase to open the public for a new City Park Pool. All right. And with that, we have a few concluding slides that Julie would like to present to you.
Yeah. Just a couple things for me, and I'm going to keep them up here to answer your questions. First of all, if you're all freaking out about the chemicals being next to each other and all of that, just know that the other thing is that moving forward to a new facility or renovating or even repairing, we would probably move away from using muratic acid. We don't at Mercer right now. We use what CO2 instead, which is safer. That's another way an improvement would make the entire project safer and better for that. But let me remind you what our public input processes would look like if we go into a full-on replacement. We've talked about this. It's in the contract with our consulting team. It has a real big emphasis on getting diverse opinions and getting a lot of opinions, not just the loudest and most organized, but to make sure that we hear from as many people as possible. So we would start with a large open house, likely this fall, which would have the project consultants introduce themselves, get general feedback from as many people as possible, probably paired with one of our other large fall events, whether that be our Halloween event or the holiday farmer's market, something like that, where we already have a big crowd. And then after that, we would host up to 14 in-person focus groups. And those focus groups are targeted to specific user groups that we know we want to make sure this facility works for. So we have not only the general-use lap swimmers and regular users, but we want to make sure we get a group that is, features a lot of people with different disabilities or caretakers for people with disabilities, want to talk with childcare providers, we want to talk with teens, see if we can crack that, what makes it fun for the teenagers to come to the pool, talk about, talk with members and allies of the LGBTQ community, talk to a lot of different groups in a format that allows them to speak individual or speak in a small group directly with the consultants in a private space and give their feedback that they may not be as willing to give in a larger, open, large groups. We want to do both, the large group and the small groups. The way that these groups will be chosen is we are going to ask people, we'll publicize it and ask people to fill out an interest form online. That interest form will give them the opportunity to self-select the groups that they would be appropriate for. And then they will be chosen without their names being seen by the selection committee. So we'll say we have 100 people that are interested in being in the family of swim lesson participants. We would make sure that they actually had kids that had been registered, but then once that, we would just randomly choose from that 100 people to get the number we want for the focus groups. The only difference, the ones that wouldn't be that way, obviously, the Parks Commission is a group that you know is not going to be selected like that. The childcare group would be a targeted one. We want to make sure that we get childcare providers, day camp providers, those kinds of things. The other thing is that people would only be able to participate in one focus group, so it'd only be chosen once. We would give preference to Iowa City residents. And we would try to make those as comfortable and as individual a consultation with the consultants as possible. All that information gets put together with the information from the larger community meetings, and that goes to the three concept designs. So all that information will be boiled down, three concept designs. Those concept designs will then be put out in a public statistically valid survey for folks to weigh in on their design. All of that information then will come back to you, as well as the Parks and Rec Commission for a decision at that time. Okay? So lots of steps to go through if we go down that replacement. But just remember, tonight, the question is, do you want to repair the pool? If we decide to repair, there would not be any further public input, because that would be towards a repair. Or if you're going to replace, then we move into that full-on public input process. If that makes sense? Okay. And the timeline, which I just lost here. Hopefully, we're going through this. Construction would be over the season, not next summer, but the summer after. Okay? And it'd probably be that way whether it's repair or replacement. Probably not be open for the season, the summer of 2025. Okay? All right. Mayor, I think we're done. We'll answer.
Any questions for, is Andrew and Chris, is that correct?
Right.
Great. Or Julie?
I got a question for probably Jeff. Where do these funds come for, come from to pay for this? Maybe a bond or?
No, our current plan is to use our facilities replacement fund. We'll be able to bond a small amount, $700,000 or so, but we would look to our facility reserve fund to do that. Council could choose to go to a, to bond for that. It would require a referendum and voter approval. But how it's budgeted now is essentially cash reserve.
That actually is a question, and I'm sorry to hop in. I was just at piggybacks, because it has to do with budget. But I did see the numbers for, let me see, for repair. What kind of budget are we looking at for replacement?
So the contract calls for two designs at about the $10.5 million and one at 15.
Okay.
To this point in the process, we didn't go any farther down that road.
Yeah.
Because not knowing which one you were going to choose and not knowing all of many design choices.
Well, no, I mean, this helps, because then I was like, how would you know what to do for concept, right? So that helps.
I think it's probably safe to say, given our experience with just about every capital project in the last few years, that it's going to be hard to even replicate what we have for that $10 million. I think one of our challenges through this process is going to be really understanding those cost drivers and figuring out how much we can put into the project to ensure that we're going to get the longevity that we want. These are one of these projects where you don't want to skimp on something that's just going to cause a headache another five, 10, 15 years down the road. So that $10 million was really a placeholder during the master plan phase. But I expect there'll be some pressure during the design phase to push that up.
Sure. And then I have one final question, and then I'll yield the floor to others. So if the pool were to be repaired, and I know that there were caveats in there about it's not inclusive of everything that needs to be done, and that there's always some wiggle room on both ends as far as shelf life, but how much time would we literally be buying through repairs that you are, because you said it, and I get it, that you're kind of kicking, we would be kicking down, excuse me, kicking the can down the road and that it would end up being more expensive for a variety of reasons. But what would that shelf life be?
I'll let them answer the shelf life, but remember the other part is the stability of the walls?
Yeah. No, 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 I'm not.
That they are going to hold up to the kind of renovations that you might do. So it may not even be feasible at that point.
Right. Well, and that answered my question about what is the risk, so I appreciate that. I just wanted to know what we're talking about in terms of return on investment here.
We would try to approach a repair scenario to have a life expectancy of at least five years. But with this facility, it's in question again, because if we excavate the entire perimeter of the pool to try to stabilize all of the walls, it just doesn't make economic sense to try to stabilize the walls and not just remove them and build them back. And even in a liner scenario, yes, you could install a liner over the pool that would temporarily stop the leaking, but the structure itself, and we've seen this over countless projects with liners of pools that are aging, the structure continues to deteriorate beneath the liner. So what happens with a liner is you no longer see the failures to patch them. So the eventual reason for closure of the pool tends to be something more catastrophic, like a huge crack opening up, because it splices the liner, tears the liner, and you just didn't see it. So it's hard to, it's hard to say with any certainty of a life expectancy for a repair beyond that timeframe.
Thank you.
I have some questions, and I'm going to just frame this in the context of some of the community conversations that we've had. And I got a question just this weekend at the farmer's market where somebody said, why are you going to destroy a City Park Pool and put in a water park? Which has never been a plan or an intention. But that's kind of the, some, I think skepticism or concerns like that have been floating around. So I just have some really pointed questions that I want to just sort of address for the record, I guess. Were you, as the consultants, directed to come up with the replacement rather than the repair?
No. No, we were hired to provide our opinion.
Please use the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. I would say no. We were hired to provide our opinion, and because this is our career and I've done this for many, many years, Chris and I, there are facilities that will do reviews such as this and recommend repair. So based on the condition of this facility, we sincerely recommend replacement.
Thank you. And similarly with the budget, were you told that it needed to exceed $10 million in order to do the repair, anything like that?
No, only that the, as we were hired, the framework of this $10 million working point from the previous comprehensive master plan. So we knew basically that that was previously discussed from the study of a project, whether it be repair or replacement, that was probably of at least $10 million. But because our firm, this is what we do, we specialize in aquatics, we have a lot of historical data to extrapolate, and so we would have been able to arrive at these dollars without that information.
Thank you. Okay. Some less pointed questions now.
Oh, and the water park question too. That, again, is just the period to welcome the community to comment for that public engagement. As I mentioned, I would imagine some of the concepts might be different than each other than we explore. There might be a concept that looks very much like the existing pool, and there could be a concept, if the community desires, that might have some other aquatic features. So again, there's no, there's no preconceived design solution here. And in fact, that's one of the most exciting things for us to do as architects and engineers and with clients such as you, is to go through this design process with the public. We can truly say that in 30 years, we have never designed the same pool twice. Every, we've designed hundreds of pools, they are never the same. And that's one of the things that's just exciting, as I will tell you as an architect, because every pool is uniquely designed for the community. We can't necessarily please everyone, but we want to try to build consensus around that majority opinion.
Thank you. Okay. So just some things that kind of go through in order of your presentation. The amount of water loss is super concerning, because this is chlorinated water that is just escaping the pool, not through a stormwater system or just sort of into the ground. Can you give us a sense of what the scale of that, like more than 5 million gallons in a year? Like just, I don't, and that may be a better staff question than consultant question, but just.
It's about five and a half inches of water every day across the entire surface of that pool. Now, it isn't all going directly into the ground. It is being captured underneath and going down into, we believe, at least partially into a storm sewer.
Okay.
We don't know for sure. But, so yeah, it is also though the cost of chemically treating all that new water and just the ongoing issues of trying to keep it full, basically.
And for the, having those 1987 plans was really interesting and seeing some of the, you know, notes about replacements and that kind of thing. Were you able to uncover any information about what the expectation of the longevity of any of the products at that time? I mean, I saw a note of like 3M weatherband sealant, you know? Do we have a sense of if we've exceeded the renovations that were made at that point in time?
I would say generally speaking, that, that those types of products that were selected at that time, now that we're, you know, reaching 40 years later, they, there are, there are no repair products on the marketplace that I'm aware of that would have a 40-year life expectancy being underwater, unless you physically included water stops with the repairs. And when water stops are cast with the concrete, they're not a surface caulk. And what we saw from the product that you recommend, that you mentioned, that we would, we would not recommend, we would not recommend surface sealing, but we would actually recommend water stops, which would be standard in today's design realm.
Sure. Sure. And then we had a presentation a number of months ago from staff that included some of the similar pictures relating to, you know, the peeling paint and the delamination and that kind of thing. Can anyone speak to just like how, like what were the conditions to get to those pictures? Like is someone, like is that just how it exists after weathering when the water's gone? Are you like picking at it or kicking it? How do we get that level of damage?
Majority of that is pictures taken as we walked in last spring after the winter freeze thaw. The ones around the main drain, you saw an actual large piece of concrete pulled back. That was done to assess the conditions around there. So that was done by staff. But really, other than maybe a shoe kick here and there, that's what we walk into pretty much every spring.
Thank you.
And I seem to recall from earlier conversations about water loss, that this is, I mean, there's some expectation of evaporation, but this was X number of times more than would be reasonably expected. And I think that was even from an earlier water loss number. So just for full context, can you kind of clue us into like how many more times water loss this is?
Let Chris speak to that from an engineering standpoint, because I'm looking at pressure on the.
Or at least ballpark.
Yeah. Maybe an inch of that five inches.
Yes, I would, I would say maybe an inch. You know, it's going to depend on weather conditions, wind conditions, things like that, certainly.
Splash.
Splash out, you know, how, those kinds of things. But I think more concerning was maybe not the number, but the increasing amount each year that indicates that it isn't just the evaporation, which we would expect some, or the splash out. But you're obviously losing much more water, from 36,000 to 55,000 gallons a day, you know, over the last two years.
And probably good to recognize that with evaporation, you're not undermining the structure underneath the pool, which is another concern, you know, that I had when we were learning about this originally. We don't know how much washout is happening.
Correct.
But we don't get any washout with the natural evaporation that we would expect.
Right.
Thank you both, thank you all. Yes. All right. We're going to open it up for public comment. I wanted to see how many folks wanted to speak to this agenda item. And if you're online, please raise your hand as well. I see one online. Welcome. Mazah here.
Hello? Do you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi. How are you? Good. How are you? Good. How are you? Good. How are you? Hi, everyone, thank you. I really don't have a lot to say. I hear the, all the conditions, the bad thing that's happening at the pool, but I really just want to encourage you to do something about it, to keep it. Because that pool is really helping a lot of vulnerable people who cannot take their kids to swimming lesson or something like that. And also like it's center on the downtown where everyone can access it. Please try your best to keep that pool, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Seeing no one else in person or online, I'm going to close the public comment and council discussion.
Well, I think first of all, it, much appreciation for the detail, level of detail in this report. There's a lot to go through, many pages of stuff. Certainly, you know, the, the water loss, but also like looking in more in depth at some of the facilities, you know, the, the need for some changes is absolutely, you know, pretty crystal clear. Looking at that one, the one room that had been mentioned a couple of times, looking at that, and having spent a couple summers working in a petrochemical plant in the safety department where we talked about things like, how would you do rescues out of confined spaces? That entryway, just for me to climb up and down that ladder, I could barely fit, but if I'd have been injured and needed to be on a backboard, I can't even imagine what I fired. So good example of, you know, designs that need to be updated, and that's part of the plan, and so. But again, just wanted to say thanks for the level of incredible detail that was in this report.
I would, I would echo the, the comments about thanks and the thoroughness of the report. I think for, for me, the answer here is very clear as to what we should do to be both stewards of the facilities of our community and stewards of our, of our taxpayer dollars. And that's what brings me to lean towards the replacement option. Got to be thinking about everything, and quite honestly, the, the status of the facilities in many ways, especially the chemicals, is unacceptable. And I'm not placing blame on anyone for that. People deal with the cards that they're dealt, can't have any issues with that. But it is our decision to maintain the status quo or to, to change it for, for better. And that's where I'm at right now.
I would also like to echo, thank you to the consultant for such a very extensive report. And I'd like to say that pictures do indeed speak louder than words. We'd heard about the conditions, but to actually see these pictures, it was very dismaying actually to see the stated deterioration that has occurred to the body of the pool and the surrounding facilities. Disability awareness has always been very important to the city, and so the fact that several portions of the pool area are not ADA compliant is also very concerning. So I do approve of any updates to that. The City Park Pool is undoubtedly, as you'd mentioned, it's an iconic part of Iowa City history nestled in the middle of our, our beautiful and wonderful City Park. For many years, people have anxiously, myself, awaited the opening date for the pool and used it and enjoyed it. So in determining the next steps, we can't take the decision of this beloved pool lightly. We must consider that, the charm, which I think you have taken that into consideration, the charm and the character and, and all the positive merits of it. I was very happy to see, Julie, thank you for that list of focus group people that you're going to include, because I think that is most important, that, that we seriously take into consideration input from the public by reaching out in as many ways as possible and listening to them about what their thoughts are on the design process. And I think that's going to be very important to, to listen to the people about that. Thank you.
Well, I too appreciate the thoroughness of the, of the assessment. I think from my standpoint, I would, I don't, in talking with others, so concerned about the pool house, I mean, the pool house, I think people were accepting of the fact that that, there wasn't, the, the level of attachment to the pool was not applied to the pool house as well. And seeing some of the conditions in there, it, it looked kind of dangerous and grim. So, so that, the pool house, in my mind, had never been the issue. I, you know, looking forward, you know, and my background is in landscape architecture, I did not work on pool facilities, but I've worked on other types of public facilities, some of which were existing and preserved through the process with additions. I, I think it's an interesting problem, working on a project like this where you clearly are dealing with a, a facility that has, you know, what I would call an elegance to it and a spirit to it that relates very, very remarkably well to its setting. The simplicity of it, I think, speaks to the simplicity of the Woodlawn setting. So I'm looking forward to seeing how, with the transfer, with the project and, and any changes that may ensue, how that spirit is preserved. And I think it can be done. It's trying to identify what those qualities are, I think, in part, you know, in terms of its composition and so forth. But that's what I'm interested in, is seeing how through transformation, that structural preservation of the spirit of the place can be preserved. So thank you.
Well, I think is, we've had, we have one of the phases completed, at least from what you all were contracted to do, and I think it's up to this council to make a decision on either replacement or, or fixing it. I think my colleagues have shared that it needs to be replaced. And I'm, I'm very interested in the next phase, which is that conceptual design phase, where we'll get input from various people. The, the open house will be great, as well as the focus groups, I think. Ensuring that all voices are at the table and inviting various people is going to be important. And I'm looking forward to not even stayed in a box where, right now, and we have people come and share what they envision for this site. So I'm excited for this. Thanks to you all for the work that you've done. And I want to thank our Parks and Rec Commission and, and our Parks and Rec staff for all the work that they've done. All right, roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item 10I, Assessment, 91 Commercial Drive. Resolution adopted in assessment schedule for court-ordered fencing at 91 Commercial Drive and directing the clerk to certify the same to the Johns County Treasurer for collection in the same matter as property tax. And there is a motion to defer to October 3rd.
Yes, staff is requesting the motion to defer, Mayor. Obviously, a member of council will have to make it. The reason being was we got a late payment of a significant amount, $1,000 toward the 14, or $2,400 that remains to be paid, and we'd like to allow the property owner to continue to make those payments. Frankly, we'll get the money sooner if they do than if we assess the bill for taxes. So we would, staff would request that council move to defer this to October 3rd.
So moved.
Moved by Dunn, seconded by Harmsen. And anyone from the public like to address this topic? Or any questions for council to our staff? Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes, motion passes seven to zero. Item 11 is council appointments, 11A, Community Police Review Board. We have one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through June 30th, 2026, and there is no gender requirement in council discussion. And this is the only appointment that we have tonight.
I would put forward Franz Becker. Franz is a public defender.
I agree with that.
The only thing I'll mention about Mr. Becker, and it's exactly the point that Council Dunn has raised, is that he's a public defender. The hesitation or the concern I have is what information he would have access to as a member of the Community Police Review Board and whether that could be used in other cases. Obviously, he would need to recuse himself, clearly, in, in any case in which there is a criminal defendant that his office is representing. I'm less concerned about that because I think that conflict would be obvious to him, I assume. I'm more concerned with whether, as a result of his work doing criminal defense work, he might recognize voices or, you know, that kind of thing through the body camera video and so forth that he would be allowed access to, and whether or not that would create a problem in, in other contexts. I don't know if it would, but it was something that our office was discussing earlier this week.
Just to follow up on that, Eric, isn't, doesn't that kind of cut the other way? Like any information that he would learn that relates to a case, I mean, it, it would all have to be like disclosed in discovery anyway.
Well, it depends on, well, I, I guess I'm not sure. I guess the scenario, the hypothetical scenario that we were envisioning was, again, not necessarily a case in which he or a member of his office is representing, because I think the conflict would be clear and he would need to remove himself from consideration, but more that he's exposed to a case in which he is, he and his office are not representing, but says, oh yeah, that's Officer Smith, I can see. And then in a separate unrelated case in which Officer Smith is involved, not the same, but a separate one says, hey, but weren't you involved in that, you know, weren't you involved in a case in which you, you know, were accused of doing X, Y, or Z, something like that? Information that would presumably not be accessible to defense counsel, because I don't think that would normally be the kind of thing that would be discoverable. And so it's that kind of scenario that we're, we have some concerns about.
We have, in fact, I know we did, because I think it was the very first meeting that, or among the first meetings that Counselor Harmsen and I were on, when we talked about whether there should be, and this was as a, as a requirement on the commission of having somebody who had been in law enforcement at one point or another. So this is, this, this person is simply, as a resident, as a citizen, so they're not fulfilling that current or former, but they are currently a lawyer, right?
Right, there's, the, the ordinance presently...
Presently.
Says the board shall include one current or former peace officer, as that term is defined, except that a peace officer employed as such by the City of Iowa City within two years of the appointment date should not be appointed to the board. For example, that's why in the notes for your packet, you see that former Officer David Schwint is not yet eligible until November of this year. I'm not aware that there's currently a police officer on the commission, although the ordinance also indicates that the City Council reserves the right for good cause to waive the requirement that the board includes one current or former peace officer, so you're not, not required to have one.
Yeah. I, for consistency, I was uncomfortable with it at the time and voted against it, so I'm actually not in favor of this appointment at this time of this person, just from my own sense of consistency.
I would suggest Denise.
She was someone I liked as well.
I do think we just need to maybe clarify for the future if knowledge of, I don't know, like a member of the public who is out and about a lot and like watches officers or knows officers would never be disqualified for, like that just feels really wrong to say that, that the interest of members of the public who are protected by, you know, the, the due process rights of, of what happens in the criminal legal system should be, like that, that there could be some advantage relating to wrongdoing that the city, I don't know, I'm just very uncomfortable with, with. I, I understand your job is to limit the liability of the city and that you see the possibility of someone who would have information that could increase the liability of the city based on officer wrongdoing.
Well, I'd offer two clarifications. One, it would be based on alleged wrongdoing. I think the vast majority of complaints that are filed with the CPRB are found to be not sustained. But the other part of it is that the information that the CPRB gains access to is not information that's available to the public. They meet in executive session to review the new videos and to engage in their deliberations. And so I totally agree with you in the sense that there might be members of the public who, you know, are just in a position, you know, for example, let's say, folks who work at downtown bars would have a lot of interaction with police officers and would be able to see a lot about how they engage, particularly with folks who have had too much to drink, let's say, in a late night evening. But, and that's fair game. But the information here that CPRB members get is, is more than that. They get more information than would otherwise be available to members of the public.
And I think what I'm uncomfortable with is you're taking the next, next step of assuming that a person who's in a role to use that information would do so. And I, I don't think...
I think there's a risk of that, that's what I'm...
I think there's a risk of that in any situation, and that this is a person who actually has an ethical code that would prohibit that.
I guess I'm not certain that, that they would be limited to information that, limited and prevented from using information they gained elsewhere. I, I don't know. Can...
Any, any other considerations for appointments?
I have a question. Can body cam footage be FOIA'd?
Can it be what?
FOIA'd.
We consider that part of a police investigative report, so typically, no. Now, sometimes it's released on a discretionary basis. We certainly have done that in the past, any, any number of occasions, but typically, no.
So there's two names that have been submitted, Franz Becker and Denise Zetzie.
Seche.
Seche.
Seche, okay. Any other?
I had Jessica Hobart was another possibility.
That application had jumped out at me too, just for the combination of the social work and criminal justice kind of combination backgrounds. Thought that was interesting. That looked like a masters in two different, two different areas.
Well, any other nominations? So we have the two that I just mentioned, and Jessica Hobart with, and each of the nominations, both have two counselors so far. We need to get to four.
I could switch to Jessica.
I'm comfortable going to Jessica as well. That would give us...
I would be okay with Jessica Hobart.
Okay. So the majority has selected Jessica Hobart to be on the Police Community Review Board. And could I get a motion to appoint?
So moved.
Moved by Thomas.
Second, Alter.
All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, I'm sorry.
I said nay.
All right. Any opposed? Nay. So motion passes six to one. Item number 12 is announcements of vacancies new. Human Ri, 12A is Human Rights Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through December 31st, 2025. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, October 10th, 2023. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved.
Alter.
Second, Burgess.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Announcements of vacancies previous, 13A, Climate Action Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, September 26th, 2023. Housing and Community Development Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Parks and Recreation Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, September 12th, 2023. Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Woodlawn Avenue, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. And we are on to item number... item number 14, City Council Information.
Had an excellent event at City Park for Labor Day, the Iowa City Federation of Labor. Great turnout. I think it was a good bit bigger than last year. A lot less food. I wonder how that happened. So thank you to all the folks that turned out for that. And thank you to the, the workers that got us to where we are today.
I echo what Counselor Dunn said. Hope everyone had, had an enjoyable Labor Day. And I'm on the Monday collection route for, for waste management. And so I do appreciate those workers who had to labor on Labor Day. And I know there are others, because I was also at that City Park event, and there were the Parks and Rec folks that were also working. So thank you to all those workers that had to work.
This Saturday in the Pet Mall from 12 to 5:30, I believe, is the World Cultural Fest. And so that should be a exciting event.
I'm gonna probably preempt Laura here, but-
No, go ahead.
Is it the climate action-
Yeah, do it.
-coming up next week? So several days of events, and I'm frantically scanning them right now, but Laura probably has them committed to memory.
It's the 18th through the 23rd, and you should go to icgov.org/climatefest, all one word, to see the full schedule.
Great. All right, we'll move over to item number 15, City Staff, City Manager's Office.
Yeah, just a quick, a quick observation. We, we breeze through the consent agenda meeting after meeting, but on your agenda today, that's already been approved, you had three affordable housing funding agreements for $900,000, two projects for separate park improvements, a road improvement project, and two major public facility improvements in addition to a few other things. So a lot going on outside of what's on your regular agenda, too.
Our City Attorney?
Thank you. Nothing from me, Mayor.
And our City Clerk Office?
Nothing from me.
All right. Item number 16, could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, Taylor.
Moved by Dunn, seconded by Taylor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.